Come to this afternoon's Audit Committee. We'll start with the usual safety information, so there are no fire alarms planned. So if you hear an alarm, then please exit back through the main entrance hallway and through the main door, down the ramp to your right and assemble adjacent to the cathedral. We'll start as usual with a round of introductions. If I can start with you Fabian and then people around the corner.
Okay Fabian Button, Councilor for Children's Health.
Under by your independent member.
Simon Cook's an independent member.
Jonathan Hucker, councillor for Stockford.
Joel Geeta, councillor for Aitken, loves Western Wood.
Tony, councillor for Cotton.
Patrick, councillor, councillor for Hotlows and Halfside.
David Lordlock's councillor for Lockleys.
Alison Taylor, clerk to the committee.
Vanessa Wilson, Transformation Director across Children's Education.
Alison Mullis, deputy chief administrator.
Simba, chief internal auditor.
And I'm councillor Andrew Grant, the chair. Okay, moving on to apologies for absence, have you had any?
Chair, I've not received any, but I just loaned for the committee that councillors call and chairs are currently not here.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest from committee members that need to be heard? No, thank you. Minutes of the previous meeting, I've noticed a couple of typos which I've alerted to the clerk. Has anybody got any comments or notes or matters of fact to raise from the previous minutes? No, in that case, I'm going to assume that we are happy to approve those as the correct record. And we'll move on. To the action sheet, have any members got any questions or queries to raise from items that are on the action sheet? Again, I am being lectured all shakes of the head, so we're going to take that as read and move on to the public forum. So we've had six statements on the public forum and also two questions. So I'm going to start with the statements and we'll work through those in order. If you can summarise your statement in around a minute or so, that'd be good. All the statements have been circulated, so members have had a chance to read them, so you needed to read out far between them, but if you want to summarise it, that'd be great. I can't see councillor Galanres in the gallery. No, it's not here. Ian Hughes. No. Mike Aldridge, if I can see mics there.
Good afternoon everyone. Yeah, my statement is basically asking why is a cash flow waste company giving loans and other assistance to the deputy mayor's own company? This whole story business is a template for how not to set up partnership with business. There is a complete lack of boundaries, including the deputy mayor advocating companies directed by Christine Bamford at all times. This makes it very difficult for officers to manage the contract when there were constant overspends and poor provision and monitoring information. Officers will be weak and complicit in this. Someone should have said no right at the outset rather than encouraging this apparent abuse of rules and uncontrolled expenditure. Officers should be held accountable by the Audit Committee and other processes.
Thank you, Mike. Moving on, Helen Powell. Is Hannah Powell here? No, she shakes her head. Felicity Payne? No. Diane Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for this opportunity to speak to this committee. I do not intend to repeat my statement here because I believe the five statements and the several questions submitted under the umbrella of Stonehenge TVG in the public forum bundle presents a clear, comprehensive and sharpening portrayal of how this matter has been mismanaged with the constant annual waste of public funds. I therefore urge the committee to confirm its intention to fully investigate these matters so that the questions raised regarding the waste of public funds can be answered in full and in a fair way without any bias whatsoever and that the findings are published in the public domain. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. Moving on to the questions, and I should say at this point that we don't have debates on the public statements within the committee, but I think members will have heard your concerns and will be looking to see, will be looking at options with regards to how they explore those issues further. Moving on to the questions, councillor Jonathan Hucker.
Thank you, Chair. I do have a supplementary. The answer that's been provided to me, I interpret that as meaning that the council in its position as landowner has changed its position and is now no longer siding with Cotton School. I understand also that the council in its position as Commons Registration Authority has changed its position from neutral to robustly defending the decision taken by the Public Rights of Way and Greens Committee. What I am interested to know is at what level within the council these decisions are being taken?
Thank you. I was just about to suggest you bring yourself to your question and you did, so that was good. We all pass on to the relevant officer and will get an answer. It'll be published in the usual way for public forum and circulated to members as well, please. Thanks, Alison. And the next question is from Mike Aldridge. We have not had answers provided at this juncture and I understand you're aware of that. I have been advised that answers should be provided by the end of this week in writing and circulated to, and I've asked that it be circulated to the committee as well as published in the usual way. I've also asked, or I'm also going to ask, that when you have your answers, that your committee's written supplementaries and that they should be published in the usual way as well.
Okay, so I can't ask my supplementary questions?
I mean, I can take supplementaries now, but the idea of supplementaries is they follow up on the answers, but if you want to, if you want to abolish your supplementaries now, we can arrange to have those go to officers.
No, just go ahead. I mean, yeah.
Okay, okay. Fine. In that case, that brings us to the end of public forum. And the next item on the agenda is the work programme, which we are asked to note. So have you got any comments on the work programme? The only thing I would add or comment on this is that you'll see that one of the items on the work programme for today was the Add-on Social Care Transformation Programme update. You'll notice that that's not actually on the agenda and the reason for that is because Simba and his team are going to be doing a lot into that in the new financial year and it'll come to the committee as a result of the audit investigation into that. So there's no questions or comments on the work programme. We shall move on to the first report on the agenda, which is the internal audit draft Q1 plans for twenty four, twenty five, and that's still a bit too tense.
Thank you, Chair. The committee will record that in January twenty twenty three, we have approved a flexible planning process. We will move from annual audit planning to quarterly audit planning. Obviously, the shorter period of planning, this helps us to focus on the issues that are impacting on the business at the time and then there's certain advice to then have effect obviously moving away from retrospective auditing. Chair, the proposed Q1 plan is an appendix A. Appendix two provides a list of all the areas that may require assurance in future quarters, although it's subject to ongoing risk assessment and agreement with the audit committee. The report provides a lot of detail in terms of how the plan has been formulated. In summary, it is informed by a number of factors such as the risk registers, relevant national issues, professional outlook and our own audit knowledge, including the results of recent audit work. What we find that we have already circulated and provided a link to the key document that we have used to inform the audit plan. So if you look at the cover and report at the bottom, there are links of the key four documents, but we've also issued an email that indicates the key areas that have been identified by the professional audit. We have consulted management, we have engaged with our strategic partner KPMG, we have also engaged with our external auditors to make sure that we avoid any duplication. Chair, I'd like to emphasise that you see that we have allocated a number of audit days to each of the reviews, just as an indicator to inform the planning process. What is important is that we focus on those significant risks and putting on them timing. While the plan is approved, Chair, we're going to engage with management to define the scope and the limitations of the review. One last point that I want to raise, Chair, is that there will be new standards for the professional practice of internal auditing coming into effect in January twenty twenty five. So we'll bring a report to the committee in the future on the key changes and the likely impact on our own processes. Chair, I'll stop here and I'll take any questions, Chair. Thank you.
Lovely. Thank you, Simba. Has anyone got any questions? Simon, I have to bring your hand.
Thanks, Simba. It was just a comment and a quick question. The comment was around the new standards, so thank you for referencing those and we'll look forward to that paper in due course. In the detail, you've got time set aside for data analytics and continuous auditing and I just wondered if you could say a little bit more about what you think that will include?
Thank you, Simon, and that's a, that's a good question. I think the use of analytics reflects the change in environment in which we operate, where there's increased use of computers or technology in terms of the work that we do. What also this means is that there's a lot of processing in terms of the number of transactions that are processed annually. So there are two, there are two sides to this. The first, that we're going to use analytics to help us do more in terms of just testing ten invoices. We end up testing the whole, the whole population. So if there are going to be a million transactions in accounts payable, with analytics, you can test everything. So that's very, very good. It takes our, it probably improves the quality and the credibility of the assurance that we provide. But also another thing is that if we use analytics well, it's going to improve the efficiencies within the audit processes. It means that we'll be able to do the audits faster, quicker, meaning that we can increase the number of reviews that we end up undertaking in any financial year. However, this is a steep change for a lot of, not just us, but for everybody else. There's need for us to invest in terms of the right tools, as well as making sure that myself and the colleagues have the relevant expertise required for us to do that. But I can see that this is also not just for audit, it's also going to help management themselves in terms of continuously monitoring the effect of the controls. So we expect that there will be some elements that will be deployed and to work with management and then there will be something that we just end up doing ourselves. But there is a big scope in terms of the opportunity to increase the amount of assurance that we give, both at the same time. If you test ten transactions and say there's no assurance, when the population is one million and you're starting here. So there is that element that we need to move that and there's a cost to doing that as well.
Thank you, Simba. That's all. And then I'll continue, councillor.
Thank you, Chair. It's a follow-up on Simon's question, Simba, and thanks for sharing this with us. And he also applies to the approach you're taking around embedded assurance. So what will be the output of that activity, the deliverable? So for instance, again, it applies to both for the analytics work and for the embedded assurance gain, just remind me, what do you expect to bring to this committee? And then regarding the program assurance activity, is there any intention to give, beyond the most specific embedded assurance opinions, is there any intention to give like an overall assessment or view of how programs are managed across the council? Do you understand the question?
Yeah, I got the question, yeah. So the first answer on analytics is that, so we are going to use analytics in the key financial systems, yeah? So this means that we identify the significant key financial systems in the system, so accounts, accounts payable, accounts receivable, payable and all that sort. So what we do is that on a quarterly basis, we'll run those tests and then the outcome from those tests, if there is significant weakness within the system, we'll report that to the audit committee through the evaluation process. Yeah, so that's, that's it. But at the end of the year, we'll then look at all the work that we've done and it's going to inform the opinion that we then come to the committee with in June. So that work is very, very easy in terms of the outcomes. So every quarter, we'll run a number of tests for a number of significant and a number of significant systems and report that way. But in terms of embedded assurance, there are two elements to this. Embedded assurance is working with the programs and the projects, which means that we are engaging with the projects as life, so we contribute in the program boards, in the project, in project meetings. So our advice is there. However, if there is a significant risk that has been identified by internal audit, we then raise an exception, an exception report, that will then put into motion the need for management to take action. But what we've done this year is that in this, this twenty four, twenty five, although we're going to provide embedded assurance to the key transformation programs, I also want those key programs to be audited. Yeah, so that will end up with an assurance opinion on the governance, the risk, the delivery of the program. But we need to be careful because we need to use different people to avoid conflict of interest. So the person sitting on the board from audit won't be responsible for undertaking that audit. So we have a different person doing the audit. So yes, who gets those deliverables, but some of it's purely more on just advising management as they go on rather than first coming and say, should have conducted this risk here, when actually there was a vote it. So it's probably more important that we work with them and identify the risks in that open to the board.
Thank you, Simba. Jonathan and then Patrick.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Simba, for the report. I'm looking at appendix two, the potential audit areas for quarters two to four. I would imagine that some of these areas, for example, treasury management, are subject to a regular cycle of audits. But I wondered if there's any areas on here which haven't been audited before and if so, whether they've been put on the list because there's some emerging concerns within those areas?
It's a, it's a difficult, it's a difficult question. Sorry, sorry. It's a difficult question, but I think the way I respond is that, so for Q1 is definite, yeah? Q2, three, four, the fourth, that's almost like the fourth plan, what it would be. And those things that are in that basket are the things that we believe will create or have a significant impact on the options of the organisation. So, but as we go on and when we come back to Q2, we then say to you, from that long list that we have, these are the things that we will be focusing on Q2 because of either it has become a significant risk or it's something that probably we needed to do because of previous audit history, or actually we just need to provide assurance. But there are some areas where you just need to make sure that you have even positive assurance is good. So it's important that those areas, regardless of whether they have a problem or no problem, they deal the significant amount of money. So it's always good that there's assurance that the processes are working effectively. So we find that there are some areas where there is no problem, which is not in that space, but they are on the plan because it's important that you get that secure assurance because of the amount of money spent.
Thank you, Simba. Patrick?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Simba, for that briefing and explanation there. Just looking at the first appendix, it's noted on page three, we've got two point three where the says we don't have enough resources essentially to do as much auditing as we would, we would require. Obviously, the councils are overstretched in every area, but how serious an issue do we consider that to be and is that a common or a widespread issue among the authorities or is that something unique to Bristol?
So, thank you councillor for that, for that question. I do not think that as we speak now, there is a significant risk in terms of the amount of resource that I have to be able to deliver an opinion. But I think the point that we are making in the, in the report is that because of the size of the organisation, the diverse delivered module of the organisation, if you think about the partnership, the joint working, the companies, we have a huge contract environment, what we are saying is that we are not able to do, to audit every facet of the business. So we have to take on a risk-based approach for us to be able to provide assurance and for me to be able to provide an opinion at the end of the year. That's, that's, that's the most important thing. So we need to look at whether we have the results that are needed for us to deliver the opinion. But I'm not saying it's an issue now, but it justifies why we have a limited audit plan. So the challenge is making sure that we are focusing on the right things. That's very, very important, that we are focusing on the right things.
Thank you. David?
Thank you, Chair. Couple of questions about table one on page twenty nine in the big bundle. First one is about procurement and contracts management. Considering the issues that we've had over the past couple of years with procurement breaches and stuff, would it be better to allocate some days on that thorny issue to make sure that they're compliant, please? And also another question about fifteen days allocated to governance systems, considering we're changing our mode of governance in the council, is fifteen days really enough, please?
Thank you, thank you, Vice Chair. The first response to the procurement, as we speak now, we are auditing compliant, compliant procurement rules as we speak now, and there's also an audit which is ongoing on contract management. And the audit committees are aware that you are receiving quarterly reports on compliant procurement rules. So the idea is that, as you see from last year, so this quarter, we are not doing anything about that space, but we find that towards Q3, Q4, there will be more work on procurement, contract management, and they actually see that it's already provided for in the long list, that responds to the procurement. And in terms of governance, the idea is that, and I want to take you back to the conversation that we had when we were talking about the assurance that is required by this committee on whether the committee system will be, will be effective. And we said that you need to have independent assurance, but we need to audit that when you have given that time. So there is any time, but there will be time in the future, in the future quarters because we need to get into May, let the system work and then we can then make an, do an audit to see that. Otherwise, if we go there too early, there'll be nothing to audit.
Thanks a lot, that guy. Oh, Tim.
Just to come back on the last point that Simba made there, members will be aware that we've got a review baked into the new arrangements, which will, which will scape out with new councillors probably towards the end of this calendar year. And as part of that, we will do, precisely as Simba has said, draw on external assurance through probably the Centre for Governance and Scrutiny. That's the current thinking around that, just to give you a little bit more context of what a review might look like in due course.
Thanks, Tim. Guy?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple, I thought I wanted to ask a couple of follow-up questions actually in relation to what colleagues have asked, but before I do, I just wanted to check, I'm ninety-nine percent sure, it seems much louder than it normally is, that the previous internal audit reports that we've seen are not confidential, that they weren't on redacted papers for any reason. I don't think they were. I'm just thinking specifically of the points we looked at. I think it was not the last meeting, but the one before, in relation to what savings were defined as and not, that wasn't confidential, was it? Apologies, you know, I'm referring to.
I'm not aware of there having been any redacted confidential papers coming from our internal audit reports. That's what you're asking?
Great, thank you. It was just, so one was in relation to procurement, given the, one of the things that featured in that last internal audit report pertained to the way the property was disposed of and the process the council went through in order, when it was disposing of land. And I was curious to know whether that fitted into procurement within this framework or would that sit somewhere else? In other words, if the council's procuring something from itself or it's looking to internally transfer a capital asset from one directory to another, would that count as procurement or is that just a whole other thing?
Probably we need to have another conversation probably to explain to me probably what to me, but I think the, in terms of procurement, there are elements of which is probably direct commissioning of services and products. But then if you think about property, then there's property acquisition, acquisition disposal. So there could be an audit that just looks as how the council acquires and disposes. So you wouldn't expect the disposal or acquiring of property to the procurement audit. So it would be, it would be a separate review. If you're thinking about property or assets, it's going to be a different review. I wouldn't expect that in procurement you'd cover that.
Thank you. That's, that's really helpful. The other one was just stemming on from the question that was asked a moment ago. It was just to, I suppose, make a point and put it on record that my recollection is that audit, money spent on audit tends to save a lot of money, as in it represents one of the best uses of council expenditure that we can make and is to make sure that that's something that colleagues are taking to, for example, scrutiny meetings and budget setting meetings and that sort of thing, is that reminder that it's, it's not always the most sort of, how to put this, sexy of political topics to bring up in a budget context, but nonetheless, it does let us spend more money on more exciting to some things. And my final question was just in relation to appendix one. There are some times where there are some things that are kind of above the level of an individual program. I'm thinking more like a philosophy, something like agile working or agile workplaces, where you have a number of the elements of the internal audit plan that are part of that overall program, that sort of was almost like meta program or overarching transformation program. And I was just wondering how that sits within this. If there was one element, for example, of agile working that was delivering below expectations, does that lead us to look at the interconnected elements? Would that sit solely within the risk register or would that be something? How would that fly up to audit?
I think the easiest way to repeat this is that if the committee identifies an area that they are concerned about, we put it in the basket, we put it in the basket, do a risk assessment and say to you, based on the risk assessment, it's a significant or it's not. But the committee might say, anyways, Simba, we want assurance for this, can you do this for us? Then we'll do it. So I think it's just whatever, whatever the committee is concerned about. So I think it's just, whatever, whatever the commit is concerned about, we can do the preliminary to justify whether we need to do the work. But the committee at the end of the day will need just to say, okay, we need to do this, and these are the reasons, and we'll be able to do that for the committee. I think the risks are vast. In transformation, the risks are very vast, so we can only do a small element of assurance. That's why we give scope limitations in the reviews that we do, because we'll not be able to give full assurance on everything.
Thank you.
Okay, I had a couple of comments as well. One was, and I appreciate that there's been staffing issues that have resulted in the investigation and, oh, investigation's not the right word, the order of into the disclosures in the area of the disclosures team, and having been bumped into this coming quarter. But yeah, I think that's, so I think it's disappointing, but I appreciate that there's reasons for that. And I'm pleased to see that processing planning decisions and the improvement plan in the planning department is one of the things that's being looked at, because we all, I think we all know that from our casework as councillors and, you know, and other reports we've seen in council, that, you know, planning is a big thing at the moment. And I think, given focus of this committee over the past couple of years, the digital transformation programme being included, it's also, it's also an important, important thing. So those were my thoughts, my thoughts worth. We've been asked to review and approve the draft internal audit plan. So having had that and discussion and comments on it, I shall consider that we've done that and move on to the Our Families Programme update, and that's Vanessa Wilson.
Thank you. So obviously, I hopefully had an opportunity to read the report. I just wanted to draw a couple of aspects and actually pick up on a couple of questions both councillor Hucker and councillor Wilcox raised just earlier. So as part of this, children's and education transformation is a system-wide, whole system change. My report today is just on the non-DSG aspect. So we have two transformation programmes that go across children's and education. One is focused on dedicated schools grant, and then the other aspect, Our Families, is the non-DSG. But obviously, there's a close, there's correlation between the two, because obviously you've got something like homeschool travel that sits on the revenue, and then you've got send that sits on, so those two. We also have huge dependencies with the other top programmes across the council. So obviously, on the property side, tenant accommodation and adult social care. But also, we have doing some work in the digital and technology arena as well, because there's an dependency there. From assurance point of view, we do have a dedicated transformation board. We have working groups that sit underneath each, we have three core work streams, operating model. So that looks at, for example, the structure across both children's and education, looks at the culture within that, looks within the processes, the technology aspects and practices. Then a second work stream is all around your demand management. So actually, if you think about the financial pressures that sits in children's and education on the revenue side around things like placements, homeschool travel, fostering and things like that, demand management and our supportive housing pathways. And then the other third one is the commissioning partnerships, so that's how we can be smarter. For the assurance, we have a dedicated families programme board. We have representatives from audit sit on that, so Philine sits on that programme board and is part of the core. We also have, obviously, councillor portfolio, Asha Craig sits on that board at the moment. Obviously, I'm doing a review to see how that worked when we moved to a committee system, but it is really important we have that. We also, I make sure that it's cross-cutting, it's not just internally focused, the board's made up of internal body team members, which is where I've done a review of previous transformation programmes within children's and education and the reasons why. Probably that many of you sitting across from me right now question some of the assurance previously and the delivery. We also have representatives from health colleagues, ICB sit on the board. We have then representatives from the corporate services as well. That board then feeds up the corporate leadership board. The corporate leadership board have a monthly oversight of all the top five transformation programmes when we have further. We'll also go to provide updates at scrutiny, people scrutiny, resources, and then obviously coming toward it committee. I also, as part of the transformation programme, it is a continuing piece of work. So a good example is, I work alongside with Philine from audit, so he will sort of identify, give sort of central reports to me that have been done within children's and education for me to have a look at, one through challenge, but also then pick up to talk about how those changes are implemented from a long-term sustainability point of view. Also, the other thing is, as part of my role, is putting forward, so you will see for twenty-four, twenty-five, is actually putting forward recommendations of where I want audit to do reviews. And that's based on, I'm not a permanent member of SAV, I've been brought in very clearly to do the delivery of this transformation, and I'm very much about scrutiny and challenge and identifying those issues. And, you know, for me, sort of having audits is actually really, really helpful for where we need to make further improvements, but have that scrutiny on those. The other aspect is, as part of for children's and education's transformation, we are looking at our procurement processes and contract management. We are fully aware of those compliance issues, you know, and we are addressing those through as part of the wider programme and within that. Scrutiny on the finance side is quite heavy. I have a weekly meeting with our finance colleagues. Obviously, my programme's both revenue and capital. I take capital investment board, I'll have call-ins to delivery executive as well for some of the capital programmes, but also if I want any changes to profile of savings, changes to the delivery, that will also go through to the delivery executive. So I'm just going to give you that, I'm going to hand over, because you've probably got lots of questions for me.
Thank you very much. Open for questions then, councillors and independent members? Okay, so I thought I was going to have to ask mine first there for a moment. Jonathan and then David.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, on page forty-one of the reports, of the bundle that is, there's a reference to an aim of having maximised our income opportunities. I just wondered if you could expand a bit on that and what sort of opportunities exist out there?
Okay, so within children's and education, we've got the skills aspects. We've got two already within the directorate, so we have our traded services and then we have the skills. One of the things that I would ordinarily see is looking at further commercial opportunities that we can undertake. So a good example is work I've done elsewhere with other authorities, is when you're looking at sort of your provision of properties for, you know, children's homes and things like that. We already know that our neighbouring authorities have got similar problems and similar issues. If we are really smart about some of our investors' savings and some of those provisions we take on, we can actually, there can be a commercial aspect to it where we offer some of those spaces to those other authorities, obviously. The key thing here, though, that's missing is, when I look within children's and education, it's two aspects. Financial acumen is missing, and to me, that's really key in the leadership and for local authorities, public sectors, irrespective whether you're a director, head of service or service manager. The other aspect is a lack of commercial acumen as well. And so a piece of work is, as part of the programme for maximisation of income, is actually to work not just within the directorate, but to work with our corporate colleagues and identify what a commercial blueprint could look like for the children's and education directorate. There are plenty further opportunities we could consider. And to build that, part of that blueprint would pick up on the training, the skills that staff would need. And, you know, that is, that's quite a long time, but it would be really helpful to start. We do need to generate income, there are opportunities, you know. When I talk about traded service, I expect it to be fully traded and it fully funds itself. And I think part of me needs to test that, just knowing the financial pressure this director puts, has and puts on the rest of the council, has that answered?
Yes, that was very informative, thank you.
David?
Thank you, Chair. I've got some questions about paragraph three point two on page thirty-seven, three point three on page thirty-eight. So you mentioned that there are one thousand four hundred and forty-two children's placements. So is that the total number of children that Bristol City Council have under care at that particular point? Or is that the number of children they're placing at that particular time, please?
It's the total number at that time.
Cool, and then that leads me on to paragraph three point three. You say that the number of children in care is increasing. What percentage have they actually increased by?
Oh, you do like to catch me on one, don't you?
I don't mean to, I don't...
No, 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 I might not have the exact answer today, which I don't like. So I suppose the increases, there's different aspects. We're seeing an increase in children in care at different, at different levels. So sadly, we are seeing an increase in our unemployment time seekers. The reason that our numbers could be is, is if we're not moving, if we're unable to move on children, our young people, into alternative placements who are not being able to get them into, to go back home and things like that, you haven't got that move on. So all we're doing is constantly adding to the pot, if that makes sense. We, all you need is a bit like sadly recently where you've had a number of tragic incidents, and we will see suddenly more referrals, people become very concerned. And so what you tend to, you see in New York, you know, people wanting to do further protection, and that always is concerning. It is a national issue at the moment, the number of children in care. For us, it's about, actually, our children will be better, more and more of our children will be better if they were fostered, foster placements. So as you would have seen in the budget paper that was approved in twenty-four, twenty-five, I've got capital funding to implement a fostering sufficiency, what's known as the policy around adoptions and extensions to people's homes and things like that. I've seen that and seen that really successful in other authorities, where you suddenly get an increase in people, our current foster carers being able to take on additional children and new people wanting to be foster carers being able to because of that. We already have ten foster carers that would take us up on those grants immediately. So potentially, and that's not just for one child, so potentially straight away with that policy, we could end up with fifteen children being placed into foster care. I can get to you and feedback, councillor Wilcox, on the exact, if you would like.
So it does lead on to another question I'd like to ask, about what ratios are actually our children be placed into homes or fosters or foster care, and what other alternatives there are for placements? Because placements is quite a broad phrase, I can imagine.
It is. To give you the exact numbers, and because I do not like to give numbers, and obviously I'm not the person that does all of those numbers, I lead on the transformation. I will bring that back, I will send that back to committee, okay? I'll send it back to Alison. But one of the things on placements, you're right, it is very broad-ranging. You have external supported accommodation placements, really expensive. It is not something we need to step away from, which is why, again, we've got the capital programme that was approved at Budgets in twenty-four, twenty-five for those additional provision of homes. They're not just children's homes, we've also got crisis pad, which is about preventing a child having to go into a home or into a foster. So you then, obviously, we have supported accommodation. So you then, you obviously have our accommodation and placements for sort of our disabled children, those with complex needs. You then have secure placements. Now, they, we do not have anywhere nearby that provides what we call a secure placement. Sadly, we have to place them quite a distance for that. It is a project I've looked at to see, and again, this brings back to the commercial opportunity, is that something when we move to a committee system that the council would like to consider? So I've started to work on a mandate. There is lots of things, you know, for authorities that are very nervous about having a secure home and taking those placements. But for us, from our point of view, it would save money and actually better for a child to be nearer Bristol than hundreds and hundreds of miles away, you know, and that isn't good. But I can break it down for you, so we can provide you those ratios against all those different types of placements and the different aging groups as well. Is that helpful? We have done a whole paper on it.
Yes, I think that would be helpful.
I'll give that to Alison, so you've got that.
So we have an appreciation of the work that you do and the types of services that you do offer, thank you.
Guy?
Thanks, Chair, apologies, I assumed there was someone else in the queue before me. No, it's very fast, thank you. If it's okay, so this might be a little brand new, but I wanted to ask you a little bit about the Mockingbird programme. It strikes me as being one of those areas that is normally vulnerable to the unexpected, as in the way that it reads, and I'm a little just sort of reading around it, it feels kind of as though it's using a sort of, how to put it, it's allowing for a certain degree of, this might be unfair, opportunism in the way that that kind of shifts the resource used to looking after children. I can't think of a more, an area where there's more risk inherent in any sort of transformational exercise. I was wondering what your approach has been to risk around that specific project?
So Mockingbird, from our perspective, and obviously we've spoken to the other authorities that have implemented Mockingbird, and you've probably, knowing yourself, you've probably looked and researched into that to see. It is, it's a model, it's a way of support with everything that we're doing. I mean, obviously, there is a slow process at the moment, it's not fully implemented. As with all the work we're doing in transformation, there is risk, there are impact assessments looked at, and there are those go-no-gos, those decision points. One thing, I suppose, within children's education, one of the things I'm trying to say, just never take one size a pixel, just because it worked for that London borough doesn't mean it's going to work for Bristol, if that makes sense. You take aspects of it, but we need to tailor it here to what's right for Bristol, which is why when we look at the wider fostering sufficiency, we've got different interventions happening. You cannot just rely on one thing. It's a bit like being reliant on just a South West fostering hub is, I'm really, I'm not one that goes, you've got to just be part of everything that's South West, if that makes sense. You can model yourself, challenge yourself and review what other authorities, and not just other cities. You can take really good aspects that are happening in, say, London boroughs. So, you know, Haringey, for example, and some of the work they're doing around placements and things like that, that can work here, you just tailor it. But we do do those sort of impact assessments, we're doing a review of all the projects at the moment. So I'm happy to make sure that that is part of it and that we do feedback at another committee on that, if that would be helpful around the whole of fostering, if that would be helpful.
Thank you. Okay, did you have a supplementary and a follow-up, Guy?
It's just a very quick mash of clarification, immediately below I see that on page, small page ten, big page... small page ten, big page forty-five, was, um, uh, an apology to talent management. I'm assuming that refers solely to employees rather than fosterers themselves around when it talks about recruitment retention. I just want to check that that was the case.
So the talent management under the operating mode, that is our workforce. So talent management, apologies, that I, I'm using my language there. So that covers recruitment retention, that covers the development of our workforce. There is recruitment and retention issues in fostering and our foster carers. And so, you know, maybe I just need to sort of make sure I'm clear about the difference between when I talk about recruitment and retention, we've got different aspects. Um, so, you know, it's no different to the recruitment and retain, you know, retention of support workers that are in some of our homes and things like that. Um, so I won't put that down. So apologies.
Thank you. I've got Patrick and then I've got John.
Thank you. Uh, I'd actually just quickly like to note as well, I think there's been a slight numbering mix-up, uh, both context and proposal sections, starting from number three. Um, three point, the first three point one, uh, notes that we've got an increasing number of children in care. I think we also understand the reasons for that, but, um, three point ten point one under proposal uh, talks about, um, we need to tackle the number of young people and children who are accessing our support and reducing that level of need. Uh, and that, that wording seems to me to be contradictory to the increasing number of children in care. So I'm just wondering how we're squaring that circle?
So when we're looking at all the amount of support and things, that's, that is different to those coming into care. So that's some of the interventions. And some of that is about, is us, how can we stop? If we were smarter with our earlier intervention and prevention and the advice we give and working with our external, you know, other organisations, voluntary sectors and things like that, we can actually stop children coming into our system. I'm not saying, oh, I'm never going to do that. But some of those coming into the system or some of those that are going around the system on a regular basis. Reducing it is about us being smarter, you know, about what we're doing. We have been known to invest money into, to projects, you know, with some of our neighbouring authorities. But if you look at it, what have we had as an outcome? We've not seen those outcomes. We have to test ourselves. You know, we might do a project that in, does some early intervention, but has it really had an impact? Has it reduced the number of children that are coming into the system? Not necessarily coming into care, they may come into our system of some form. Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you. Um, just a quick follow-up, if that's all right, Chair. Um, are we confident that we're going to be able to avoid children going without having any impact to, to the extent that we are able to do that now?
I think, I mean, without a doubt, you know, nationally and for us locally, the, the pressures are mounting, you know, the demands on our services. Um, I think there are so many interventions we're putting in place, and much stronger interventions. I think there is, when we can, we can stem it in a different way. But we can reduce our costs by being smarter with how, where we focus those interventions, if that makes sense. You're never going to change, you know, you're never going to literally eradicate the, the position. And actually, we have a duty of care. So, you know, there are children who clearly need to be in care and, and rightly so. What we, we are doing though is challenging ourselves on a regular basis. So we, all our placements, we have a work, two working groups, one that finances it on. Um, and one that we have regularly on a weekly basis where we do this quality assurance and challenge about some of the support. So if child's in care and we've got support, wraparound support for them. One, we want to be making sure that that child is getting that support from that third party and it's the right. But actually, at some point, the child is actually, doesn't need that same extent of support. And in the past, that would have just carried on. And the, the provider may not have actually, you know, stopped providing that, but still charging us that higher cost. So lots of those measures have been put in place, which are, some of that's come out of audit, you know, reviews and things. So we need to be stronger with our quality assurance, which is why it's having to be, it's being addressed as part of this program.
John?
Thank you, Chair. Can I just ask, um, what parts, um, special guardianship orders play in this? Because I have a special, a daughter on a special guardianship order and obviously the cost to the council was minimal um, over fostering, for example, which is, which is fine, but I'm, I'm just, I'm wondering where that is in the mix from a, a cost point of view, if that's maybe a preferred option before going to fostering?
Special guardianship does play a part. I mean, obviously, um, legislation's changed. So obviously, one of the aspects, I mean, for me, special guardianship plays a key part along with the whole, our wider sufficiency. And maybe, you know, since it's a valid point to raise to say, are we articulating? Are we showing that enough within the transformation? It's definitely within the business as usual. Um, and it's probably, do I need to bring that out more in the wider sort of sufficiency, so it's special guardianship and fostering? Um, from a transformation program, obviously, there were savings attached to special guardianships. But because of the change in legislation with universal credit, um, we've done, took that to delivery executive to show there was a, had needed a re-profile and I needed to find savings from elsewhere. Because obviously, we don't get the savings, um, because of the, um, we don't have child elements in a universal credit, unlike the old working tax credits. Um, but I think that's, yeah, I'm happy to pick that up. So thank you for raising it.
Thank you. I can see Guy's hand, but I was going to jump in with a couple of questions for my own guy. And, uh, I had six various bits of comments and annotations, but I'm not going to go through them all. I'm going to cherry pick. And I'm going to go to the financial ones. Um, so the first question I think is, um, relating to the table at the top of page fifty-one in the bundle where it details the, where it's got notes of the savings under each category, this in twenty-three, twenty-four, and then the sort of broader savings expected from over twenty-four to twenty-eight. Uh, so have the savings expected in twenty-three, twenty-four been delivered? There or thereabouts? I appreciate, you know, you can't give precise figures.
So all of the savings bar two areas, sadly, I know my finances really well and, um, have been delivered. So the two areas where, uh, we had savings, we had to re-profile and reduce the savings on special guardianships. That had a substantial saving of nearly, um, five hundred K, which was no longer achievable because of the changes in legislation. So I took that to delivery executive, that got re-profiled. We've delivered the actual ninety-seven that was originally in there. The other aspect was to do with our lovely homeschool travel. Now, originally, we didn't have a saving for twenty-three, twenty-four, but it was put in at the last time. We always knew, we would struggle to deliver that in twenty-three, twenty-four because twenty-three, twenty-four was us pulling together. As you've got Cabinet in March as the new homeschool travel policy, um, both pre and post sixteen. And obviously, there's savings associated to that. We also have, um, looking for a paper to go to first committee system when it goes live, hopefully in July, on a hybrid model for homeschool travel. So that's an EV fleet where we will ha- looking to propose to have a small fleet ourselves. We have managed in the last month, um, so the last quarter, our interventions on both homeschool travel and placements, the initial ones that we, we had identified, are, have started to actually show, um, benefits, which is why our financial position, um, actually remained the same for the, the final quarter, which for, for children's is quite a, quite an achievement.
Okay, thank you. And the other question again around the, um, finances, um, was about sort of, the way I phrased it here is a bit, um, clunky, but how realistic are the sort of savings expectations over the longer term? And particularly, I was looking, you know, a lot of the costumes be front-loaded for sort of, and balanced out over the first five years and then anticipate savings sort of ongoing beyond that as far as I can read it. So, um, so, so it's a sort of question around the realis- realis- how realistic the figures are, how much value for money that provides?
Okay, so one of the things I suppose is that savings for, for example, even in the Investor Save Scheme um, and the homeschool travel, we only did, took sixty percents. We did have done deep dive reviews, quite, quite strategic, intense work has been done to identify those saving opportunities. But we've only applied sixty percent, taking into consideration, um, I'm very aware that historically, um, the delivery of actual savings in this directorate has always been, not always come to fruition, I'm going to be kind. Um, so how realistic? From my perspective, they are realistic. I've delivered these programs in a lot of authorities across country with much bigger targets and with shorter timeframes. It's the mindset and the culture. We have the resources, we have some really good people that have been brought in to help and speed up the delivery. So I've got a capital program manager, because we don't have that capacity or that capability in-house within that we can just use. I'd love to use people just all internally. Um, but we just don't have that, not the speed that we need to go at. Um, I think the hardest thing for us, and this is an interesting from an audit point of view, is you've got savings attached to both placements and, say, homeschool travels as an example. They are also the areas of pressure. So if you look at your twenty-three, twenty-four, they're the areas of financial pressure. I need to evidence that I've delivered a saving by doing this intervention and, and the pressure is a separate matter, if that makes sense. And I think it's, there's some work, where I'm working with finance colleagues to show how we can articulate that. We do have measures as well, um, for everything we're doing. They align to your, your corporate indicators so that I've not re-rent added more. The other piece I suppose is some work that myself and finances is ensuring our forecasting is better and that comes back to the financial agreement. And then the other aspect from us is a piece of work, and it's not in there, is looking at that myself and finance, doing a zero-based budgeting exercise to ensure that actually, that from a financial perspective, we've got our money being in places and the budget's arrived for that. So you can do that, that stronger piece of work. Has that answered it?
Yeah, thank you. That's comprehensive. Uh, Guy?
Thanks, Chair. Just a couple of, um, hopefully quick things. Um, one was around the, um, the revenue yet to be approved, as in the, the final bit of the project, that was four, four million roughly, I think, somewhere, uh, for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, that had yet to be allocated. I was just wondering, given that Transformation of the Council itself will be going through over the next, you know, next few months or way or another, um, how much risk is associated with that approval? In other words, without me to sort of, um, be glib about it, but does the whole thing fall apart if that doesn't get approved at the last minute? How, how are you managing the risk of that unapproved remaining, uh, revenue?
Okay, yeah. So all the top, um, with the exception of the DSG program. So I'm going to talk it from a, because it's looked at a corporate perspective. So we have the top five programs, um, and the, the fifth one is the DSG. The DSG's funding is also cured because of the way. So children's education, then the TA, adult social care and property. We all had, as you know, those costs and, and we just have put in a review of our costs. There is a limited budget. We have reviewed our asks and, and, and I've looked at that and been quite smart about those asks for twenty-four, twenty-five. We went through an initial process where we looked and, and actually you think that ask is within still the original pots that we had. But just in case, because obviously there were concerns about the, the budget process, I have looked at, in the worst case scenario, if I had to slightly reduce that, where could I reduce the resource of some of those asks without impacting those projects that deliver savings and deliver some key pieces of work cost avoidance like international social worker recruitment? I need that continued. It's not just got saving, that's fundamental for our social worker recruitment retention. Operating model, restructures is really key. I do have contingency in my ask. There is a million pounds within that ask that's to do with transitions costs, potential redundancy costs. We don't think we would need anything near that based on the number of, sadly, the number of agency staff we have and vacancies anyway, and the likelihood of what our restructure would look like. So therefore, again, there is that capacity within that. In the worst case, if we had got no money, there are fundamental projects that we would have to hold by the international social worker recruitment and funding, the bursaries and funding, the social workers academy and funding. Um, so they're the, you know, investors say, you can't deliver capital programs if you haven't got a capital program manager. We've seen this service, directorate, try and deliver improvements through its own resources and trying to, and it's not happened. You, you know, you had your strengthening families program and again, you're sitting here with the same things being talked about and probably sitting there thinking, what's different? Why is it? Because of the way it's not being run and overseen by the services themselves. I, I, you know, that, this is what I do. That's my job, day in, day out. You know, not for Bristol, it's been for other authorities. So there is a big, I, I'm here to provide challenge to the services as well as challenge and assurance to finance people like yourselves.
Okay. One more?
Just, just a little follow-up on, on that. Um, you kind of preempted me ever so slightly, but, um, just given the number of references to recruitment and retention throughout the document and the number of references to, um, I suppose adding skill, adding resource to the workforce, delivering it. One could read this report and go, wow, the headcount is going to skyrocket. I'm assuming that's, that's not the case. Some of that will be delivered through training and upscaling and all the rest of the others. I was wondering what your assumptions were around headcount?
Yes, um, it's definitely not upscaling, that's for sure. What we just need to be smarter about, there is part of this project, is transformation should be a continuous thing. And so one of the things I've talked about is how do we do this on the long-term sustainability? You don't need someone like myself. It's making sure that the service knows how to, to continue as that constant change, that improvement. Workplace recruitment and retention is really key. That is because we have got in, like our area teams, over twenty-five percent vacancies with field of agency, which is costly. Um, and we've got a number of interventions that are happening, not just the international, we've got these, part of our restructure is equity of pay, is doing the re-grading of social workers and occupational therapists, as you would have seen in other authorities to align to the market rates. There's some of the proposals that will go through decision papers to CLB and people like that.
Thank you. And any more questions or comments on this paper? Okay.
I'm so sorry. Last one, I promise. Um, it was actually just in reference to something that appeared in the Equalities Impact Assessment from the Cabinet paper rather than the report in front of us. It was something that, um, given that some of this committee's been looking at, I thought was worth raising, which was, um, one of the things that was raised was around income generation and, uh, the idea of discretionary concessions for external equalities-led organisations. I was just going to not ask, I suppose, but just, um, uh, encourage a lot of rigor in that process and how that functions and how that works. It's one of those areas that the Audit Committee has looked at before.
And I'm happy to take that to the board. That will be no different to, I suppose, when you do the paper, put forwards some ideas around home school travel. One of the things we're looking at is how we could do a social enterprise, you know, and looking for those different aspects. Those papers need, as you already said, there needs to be a lot of scrutiny on those proposals and what we're looking at, so happy.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Vanessa, for answering those questions. And we're glad you get about your day now, but we're asked to note the progress on the Transformation Program. And I think we can consider that we've done that and move on to the External Inspections Update Report, which is going to be presented by Tim McGann.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be very brief by way of the introduction because the report is one that comes to the committee on an annual basis and providing a summary of the external inspections that the council has had and to give you information about the management responses and the arrangements in place to address the outcomes of the inspections. And all of that detail is in the report, but it's probably worth just teasing out a few of the key things. So firstly, as you've heard from Vanessa just now, one of the key things in there is the Ofsted report from two thousand and twenty two, which wasn't ready for the previous iteration of this report. But as you've heard from Vanessa, there's an extensive program of work through the, our Families Programme that is taking forward the recommendations to address the findings from that inspection. And there was a SEND revisit, so the SEND inspection originally was a few years ago and there was a revisit in October twenty two, which found that there was just one of the five original recommendations remaining to be addressed, which required the preparation of an accelerated progress plan to address the relationship between parents and carers. And that was endorsed by the Department for Education and is being, the oversight of that is through the SEND partnership group. There are five council run children's homes and they are subject to the Ofsted regime as well. And three of those had a good inspection rating to require improvements and for all of them, there are improvement plans in place. And there's a corporate, there's been a corporate peer, corporate parenting peer diagnostic carried out, which will be reporting later, later in the year with a new strategy around our corporate parenting responsibilities. The planning peer review, you'll all be familiar with, was conducted with some fairly root and branch changes to the way the development management functions. And that's been, that's all been progressive as well. There's been a couple of compliance audits for with Homes England. The first of which was a mock internal audit in preparation for the real thing by our HRA Newbuild Development Team, and that provided reasonable assurance. There's a piece of work that relates to our, one of our rough sleeping accommodations that looks at the use of grants and compliance with funding, funding conditions. And that is due to report a little bit later in the year. We've had a couple of external reports, pieces of work done by SAVLS, which again are, we're awaiting the findings and recommendations on those. And the first of which is a longer compliance data review and also a consumer standards and preparingness review. We are anticipating that those reviews and recommendations will be with us within the next month or so. And then finally, there was HTA, the Human Tissue Authority, inspection of our public mortuary at Flatsporton, which identified four recommendations which have now been resolved. So as the report sets out, this is an overview. And there's obviously a lot more detail, much of which has already been reported to various places. And there's internal governance in place to deal with the management actions that flow from from all of those reviews that have been reported thus far. I will endeavor to answer any questions, but may have to defer to other officers if a detail is not to my knowledge, Chair. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Tim. Yeah, I was expecting that some of the questions might have to be passed on. So committee, we are asked to note the findings of external inspections, note any improvement actions required as a consequence of inspection findings. And we're appropriate the management response and note the assurance arrangements in place that oversees the council's response to inspection findings. But are there any questions or comments before we get to that stage? David and then Patrick.
Thank you, Chair. My question is about paragraph six zeros on page sixty one, about a planning peer review. So the peer review took place in September twenty three. And you have three sections of findings requiring immediate action, four to six months times scale of six to twelve months. Can we, should we assume that the ones requiring immediate action have been completed to the satisfaction of the Planning Inspector?
I'll have to take, I'll have to take that away and get you all the detail, if that's okay, Councilperson.
Because I've not really noticed any improvement in the Planning Inspector, the Planning Applications website. It's still quite dire and unresponsive. So, yeah, I think we should be having some updates about what has actually been achieved in this because planning is contentious, shall we say, particularly with, there was a press article last week, I think, about the fact that the Planning Inspector could come in and run planning for us because it's in such a poor position. So I think we really need to drill down on this and make sure that the planning department are meeting their requirements, please.
Chair, if I may, I know there was some reference earlier in the discussion around the Q one mortgage plan. And is it Q one, you'll be looking at development management? And if that's the case, then I would have thought fairly early on in the next municipal year, there'll be a report coming here that will give you some assurance around the way those recommendations have been taken forward. Simba?
I think my preference, I think, Chair, is that I think that we go back to the responsible managers and get immediate response to, and then if they are concerned, then we can use that to further. But we need to get that immediate response in it itself, I think, and we end up with a streamlined audit. Because this is very broad.
Yeah, it was a bad.
Can I just check, Chair? So just so we clear, you're interested in the first quarter, six months, that immediate timeframe? And we'll get you a response on that.
So considering the peer reviews in September and it's now March, I was expecting immediate actions to be already fulfilled and some of them might not be, from what I can tell.
So one of the risks have been the type of, Chair, who will answer the committee asking questions first, just then they ask the questions that I've got written down here. Yeah, I would like, I'd like if you could get an answer on where we're at with those immediate recommendations and the sort of secondary sort of four to six months time scale, whether those have been commenced. If you can get that answer to the committee, that'd be great. And then obviously, Simba will be doing this audit in due course. I had Patrick next.
Thank you, Chair. Regarding point four, the council run children's homes in the report, four point five talking about the independent visitors, can I just check what qualifications those visitors have, please?
Very good, no, we can find out from here.
Thanks, yes, just wondering who these people are essentially. And then four point six, talking about the Bristol making use of the independent sector for placing children. Our aim is to place children in homes that are rated good or outstanding, but sometimes that's not possible. So we've got this process. Can I check what the minimum standards that we have are and how those compare to the homes that Bristol's council operates itself?
I'm sorry, again, council, council, there's too much detail, but it's not within my immediate knowledge. But we can get you the answers.
No worries, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Guy?
Thanks, Chair. Process question, anything else, I suppose? I was wondering, when we do these, when these external audits come in, what happens in respect to our own internal process of thinking things like the risk register? Is there an attempt to reconcile the two, as in if something was identified within the risk register that wasn't identified in the external audit report? Is that something that would trigger anything when anyone looked into that as to why something had been identified as a problem internally, but not externally or vice versa?
To be honest, it's probably the other way around. Things that are on our risk register will inform not just our internal audit activity, but things that are done externally. And we will, a lot of these things are done by national regulators, say Ofsted will, the CQC will routinely be inspecting what the council does. And that's certainly the case with Children's Services, SEND and our children's homes. And while we're engaged with the LGA, they are now a regular peer reviewer of different aspects of council, council business. So it's a mix. I would say, you know, things that we have internally, in terms of our own risk registers, will inform where we might need to go for external inspections, but some of it is mandated and is required by legislation.
Any more questions or comments? No? Okay. I think then we can consider that we've noted that report, subject to getting the answers from those questions that have been raised. Thank you. And the final item today? Guy? I think, and for you, you've got your hand.
You know, I will deal with it offline and reserve my opportunity to come back and throw something at you by email if it is an issue, Chair. Thanks.
Probably I'm anticipating probably your follow up questions. I wanted just to add something here in that as part of the audit planning process that we do, we consider external inspections. And nine out of ten, the external inspection, once it's done, for example, Ofsted, once they get an affair or a significant risk, normally they move that into their services register and then to corporate risk. So if we do the planning process, we consider external inspections, we consider the risk registers, we consider the national outlook. But as part of the annual government statement as well, when we do annual government statement, we ask all the head of service, the service directors and executive directors to give us a sure and statement on the external inspection and the significant issues that they've identified. And those are put on the, on the schedule that we then use to develop the, to develop the AGS and also to inform the annual appeal that happened to the audit committee. But you have to take an additional offline if that helps.
Thank you. Now, that would be really, really useful. I'll just put it out there briefly while I was considering, which was on the, my recollection is, apologies if I'm mistaken, that on the risk register, when it looked at the issue of the planning backlog, one of the risks it's raised or wish to note is the risk of planning committees overturning officer recommendations, which struck me as peculiar because making a decision wouldn't strike me as being something that could add to a backlog at all. But in terms of the external review, it didn't seem to have identified that as being probably in the same way. The only reference to development control committees itself, as far as I could tell, was on point M, which was questioning whether managing two committees was sustainable. And that just struck me that I might continue that line of thinking, but still without any explanation as to what it was about those overturns that were causing a backlog. I would welcome any sort of suggestions to what the link was.
All right, that being picked up in the audit in Q one. Okay, so the last item on the agenda is the review of the Audit Committee's effectiveness for twenty three, twenty four. And this is going to be left up to me to present. So I'm not going to say a huge amount about it. We had a meeting prior to the last Audit Committee that a number of members were able to get to, appreciate not everyone was. And we looked at the SAFA self assessment for Audit Committees and we discussed a number of the issues that the committee faces and will face going forward, particularly as we move into committee system. So this report reflects those discussions in that meeting along with input from myself and officers. It's a two fold report. It's to reflect that self assessment process, which Ms Pat, obviously, is something that we do every year and normally informs the annual review. But this has been bound up into a document that is intended as a handover to the new committee when the new committee comes in in June. And this is going to be presented at full council in a couple of weeks' time so that full councils will bear off the issues facing Audit Committee and some of the considerations that councillors who might end up on the Audit Committee in the next specific year will want to bear in mind going forward. So that's a brief summary of the intent of the report. Comments and questions, welcome. Jonathan and then David.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not sure if this is a stupid question, actually, Chair, but when it comes to for council next one, will each group need to comment on it or is it just for noting without any discussion?
My understanding is, so there's two things that are going to be moved to full council next week. There is the value for money report for twenty, that Grant Thornton sent me to this committee last July. That will be moved by, as I understand it, the Lord Mayor because it can't be moved by a political, by a councillor. And so that will be moved and there will also be this report, which will be moved by myself and there will be a round of speeches, as I understand it. So yes, you might well have a chance for a three minute speech on this paper, Jonathan.
Thank you, Chair. That answers my question.
Okay, who's, I did see someone else is on David's.
Thank you, Chair. So we're talking about planning for next year, probably the next four years in terms of how things are actually going to pan out. One of the things I think is really important is having a statement that the Audit Committee should actually be webcast so that there's a proper recording of the decisions we make and how we actually make them. I think that is really important to the way the future Audit Committee is run. And I know there's been some discussions about where Audit Committee might be happening as well because of the possible uses of chamber by the other policy committees and other such committees. So if we could bear that in mind in terms of booking rooms, Bordeaux, I don't think is particularly good for doing hybrid type meetings or even recording video meetings. But I think it's something to bear in mind, please.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, I'd love for these meetings to be webcast, I would say it's done a job when he comes along each week, each month. I'd love for these meetings to be webcast and I will add that to my list of things to hand. I've got a separate list of things that I intend to hand on to the next chair if it's not myself. Who knows what will happen? But whoever the chair is next time around, there will be a list from myself of things. And certainly, webcast is one of the things I'd have liked to have had by now, but we've not been able to achieve that. I take your point with regards to, I think, all of the committee rooms have similar limitations, visa fee, hybrid meetings or all the potential to webcast. But yeah, we can maybe take that up offline. Simon?
Just very quickly, Chair, to say, happy to support the report and I think it reflects some of the conversations we had in the informal. in the informal, well, reflects those discussions as well. Just to say in terms of the independent members, obviously Addy and I are in our, into our last year. So while there's a suggestion there about additional members, there will also be the need to make sure that, that we're replaced in good time.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. You know, we, you know, appreciate them. We appreciate your input. But we, we also aware that at some point, we, we will, you know, there will be new, there will be a process to, to appoint new independent members of the committee. Okay, Guy, is that your hand going up?
Yes Chair, so I was just looking at the examples of areas for further development and how it does kind of jump out at you how many of them are in fact resource neutral or close to resource neutral. And that there's, it's not as many of the bits of the council that we look at when I say as well, all of the ways that we see of improving the service or require vast sums of money. Some of these are to do with choices and assurances and there's simply ways of working that pertain very often to the council more broadly. And in that, in that context, I think the, the concern that you're showing about the lack of a discreet scrutiny function in the committee model working constitution that now sits with, well, ready to come in May, makes that particularly apt, particularly pertinent and important. And something I really look forward to seeing this, this committee look at in the future. And just to reflect on the appointment of our independent members and to thank them for all they've done. But also to say that there's a huge potential for a lot of institutional knowledge within the committee following the elections. And I think that's something we really do have to bear in mind. Thank you for all the work that you're doing for handover. But that's also something we're going to need to keep a very close and watch the eye on moving forwards.
Yeah, right. Okay, there's no more questions or queries on that. We are asked to consider an approval for the report and agree the next steps. I think, I think the, the paper actually said consider the next steps, but given the time scale for full council, those, those next steps have rather been decided in advance. So yeah, so we shall note that. Thank you. And that brings this audit committee to an end. Guy, you're looking at me critically as if my agenda, as if you've got something else on your agenda, which I don't. That brings this audit committee to an end. Our next meeting, our last for the civic year is an extraordinary meeting on the twenty fifth of March to look at the signing of the accounts for twenty two, twenty three. So we shall reconvene then. Thank you. And I'm, I'm being informed there may be a need for a pre-session to, to that particular meeting to, to look at the statement of counterhead of the formal sign off. So bear that in mind. Well, no, by the fourteenth of March, I'm being reliably informed. So just, just be aware of that in your diary and planning. Thank you.